Pledge of the flag.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we get a roll call attendance, please? President.
Here.
Here.
Here. Okay. Board members have received the minutes from the June 15th meeting. If there's no questions or concerns with the minutes, can we get a motion to accept the minutes as written?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion Dan Stokosa, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. First item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing for Relayed Terrace subdivision. Need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Motion second made, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Hi, I'm Amy Bambadiri with Dan Stokosa Engineering. Relayed subdivision, two lot split. We've recently submitted to the Health Department. The soil tests were witnessed two weeks ago. They went into the Health Department last week. We're proposing a single-family residence on this parcel. There's an existing house that is going to be razed, if removed, and then rebuilt. There's a drainage ditch coming along the northeastern part of the, northwestern portion of the parcel. We are staying 100 feet away from all proposed wells, or all existing wells, and there is the flood plain. We're not doing any disturbance anywhere in the flood plain. And that's about it.
Okay. All right. There was some earlier discussion just regarding the parcel access. I don't know if you spoke into the engineer regarding it. There was a parcel access shows Army Corps of Engineered Wetland that runs through there.
We were just talking about it. The, you can see on the aerial, there's a drainage ditch, which is likely where the Army Corps wetlands should be following, which is, which is here, which was surveyed in the field. And it's shown accurately on this map per the survey.
So, okay, so you're saying the ditch is the actual, the wetland?
Yeah, if you look at the way the topography goes, it would make sense that the wetland would follow the drainage ditch.
Okay.
Can you see that on here?
Yeah, no, I saw, I kind of see where, where it's kind of there. It's, the two are a little bit off then.
Yes.
Okay.
So it would appear that the, that the, what appears to be the ditch on the aerial topography from parcel access would follow the survey ditch on the plan provided. And they're showing the 100-foot setback from that ditch.
Okay. So, so what's on, what you have right now is satisfactory?
Appears to be accurate, satisfactory, yes.
Okay. So we don't, there's no need to resubmit then for a?
I don't believe so.
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure we had that clarified. So I guess at this time, I guess we need to open the floor for public comment. This is a public hearing. So if you'd like to step up to the podium, please? Do you state your name and address for the record for the secretary?
Hi, everyone. My name is Kate Kehoe. I'm a lifelong resident of Five Thompson Terrace, just around the block. And I'm here actually speaking on behalf of the residents directly across the street at 31 Relayed Terrace, who are actually stuck on an extremely long line outside right now of COVID screening. So they need to be in here. So they sent an email this evening of some of their concerns, so I'm just going to read from that email. As pertaining to the town planning board meeting on July 6th, 2020, concerning 26 Relayed Terrace subdivision, we would like to add to the discussion four points. First, the wetland, the stream itself actually was illegally rerouted 10 to 15 years ago, which is the only way the proposed part of an acre is even being considered to be built on today. Basically, the property owner at the time took a backhoe, just drove it through and actually moved the stream over. And part of the evidence for that is actually the trees in that area became waterlogged and they all died because the drainage of the parcel was changed. So they wanted to bring that to the attention. Also, due to the character of the neighborhood, oh, this is them. Due to the character of the neighborhood, we would like to maintain the tree line between the proposed house and 31 Relayed Terrace, if that's possible, to maintain privacy. For the privacy and benefit of both homes, according to the plot plan that we're looking at, the new house is actually going to look like directly face on into the house at 31 Relayed Terrace. And so for the privacy and benefit of both homes, if the footprint of the proposed home could be tilted either to the east or the west, again, for the privacy of both properties, so their living rooms aren't directly looking into each other. And then last, we are concerned that our existing well will be impacted by the proposed construction and location of the on-site wastewater treatment system. How can we be assured the water table will be safe for our consumption? Thank you.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak regarding the Relayed subdivision?
No, I mean, this is my niece and she pretty much.
Well, please state your, your name and address for the record.
Daniel Tierney. I'm at 31 Relayed Terrace, Wapinkus Falls.
Okay.
And I basically, I know, I talked to my niece beforehand, so I'm sure she just made all the points. We were a little late getting in here. We're just hoping that the house could be offset a little bit, east or west. And that, I don't know, she mentioned that it had been a stream running through that property. And about 15 years ago, somebody diverted that stream, came in with a huge backhoe and made the stream go along what is the property, the border of the property. So I don't know what kind of problems that can create for the environment or the potential of a new house there. You know, it's on a concrete slab, so that probably be beneficial. A lot of the trees in the middle of the property had died because of the wetland there.
Okay.
But this is something that I don't believe this person had a permit to do. It's just something he came in with a big backhoe and did it.
Okay.
I didn't know if that was part of it.
All right, that was discussed earlier.
Oh, it was, okay.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else? Is there any comments regarding Relayed subdivision?
Mr. Chair, you did have an email come in from, well, actually, I guess it was a message to a cell phone, but because town internet was down today, they couldn't get it in any other way.
Yeah.
So that's 32 Relayed Terrace, Michelle Boland, just for the record. And her concern was also with the wetlands. And I think before we do anything, we should find out if there are other people intending to come in to speak about this application. If you want, I'll go ask.
Yeah, they could go ahead and address the runoff issue.
Do you have everybody to go over to the room?
Go.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Judith.
Something that was brought to my attention, which is that there should be boulders along the 100-foot buffer line every 40 feet. It had been missed. It fell through the cracks, but that should be reflected on the plans and included in the proposal.
Right, the, the boulders be put in place.
Along the buffer, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so if we get as far as a vote tonight, we'll have to amend the resolution. Okay. If you wish to speak, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lori Sullinger. I live at 31 Relayed, married to Danny. And the engineering report that we read online today said that the land was not a wetland or it did not have any flooding, which it constantly does. And I would like to argue that the engineering report is wrong. I'm not too sure if, I have no experience in this, but visually, it is not deemed dry. It does not look dry. The trees have all died across the street from our house, and there is a reason for that. It could well be that the roots were waterlogged. Could explain why, why the engineering report is wrong.
Okay. Is there anyone else regarding the Relayed subdivision? Okay. At this point, Amy, if you wish to address the couple of comments regarding the wetlands and the runoff at this point, just address those, that seems to be the two comments that they have.
So it's clearly in the flood plain. The, the stream is actually, it's a drainage ditch. It doesn't flow year-round, does it? It's constantly flowing?
No, it's probably sometimes where it drops or pools in different areas.
Okay. Where, which parcel is yours in relation to this? This one?
So it's to your, to your left, where you were.
Right.
That's where signifies our house.
So this is your septic system? This is your well?
Yes.
So.
Yeah, I mean, the well's actually close to your house.
That's not your house, that's the septic system?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
The well is where the, our right side of that house is.
So your house isn't on here, but the point is that we are maintaining the required separation from a well to a septic system. That's regulated by the Health Department, and we've met those requirements with what we're showing. So I know there was a question about your well being contaminated, but, and we've maintained separation to all adjacent wells in accordance with the Health Department regulations. The, the amount of, the location of the house is not set in stone on this plan. This is, you know, the house shape, size, and location. What's that? So there is a portion of the parcel that does flood, obviously. But we are not increasing any impervious in that area. So the only additional impervious on this parcel is from the roof and the driveway. Which is.
Like, had the stream not been diverted, it would, it would not be enough room to be, have built that house. It, I know that's past history, but it, it could still well be underwater, underground waters in particular, that it's affected, I don't know how, it's still marginal.
When we did the soil testing for the septic system, we did, when we do soil testing for the septic system, which was done two weeks ago, we dig down two feet, or eight feet, I'm sorry. And if there is a water table issue, we adjust the septic system based on that. And it looks like there may have been, we're, we're filling a minimal amount to make the septic system separation from the water table down. So I don't think that there was a water table issue in this area where the house and the septic system is proposed.
Do you have your results?
I do. I think they're on the next page. Water was hit at four feet below grade, three and a half and four feet below grade.
You found water in three and a half feet?
In that area, in the septic.
That's pretty far away from the stream.
Again, it's a ditch, right? Not a, it doesn't flow all the time.
Well, it's wet. It's, if it's not flowing, it's full, and yet there's a big drought, it doesn't have to flow.
Okay.
It's fairly steep terrain. Sometimes it gushes like, I mean, it's really, it depends on the rain.
Right. Right. Okay.
So that considers that that's, it passed the test if it goes down three, or is it three or four feet?
For, yes, it does.
What happens when the, what's easy comes? How, how inspired is the water table? That's related to exchange, the level of the.
It can in certain situations. The Health Department, if they feel that you're doing the soil testing in the middle of a drought, that they'll ask that you wait until after a rainstorm and do it again, which was not the case here. They witnessed and accepted the soil test results recently, two weeks ago, so.
So the information about the septic and the well and the levels, that's all Orange County, uh, Orange County, the Dutchess County Department of Health. So that's not really within the purvey of this board. Once they sign off, then we can give approval. And we, one of the conditions of approval is that the county, the Dutchess County Department of Health give approval and certify that all of the septics and the wells will be to code and that there will be no issues. So even if the board were to grant approval for the subdivision tonight, that's just the line on the paper. And then there are still other boxes that need to be checked off after that by the various agencies before anything would happen. And as Amy said, the subdivision is not, the house on it is not set in stone. So there may be some room to work with them as to whether the house could be tilted or not, you know.
That area gets really wet on a septic field, rain field, what does the, what would be the effect be to the surrounding area? Do you feel that the possible factors from being involved to that area? Is there a chance that they would, is there expression, probably, that's why they tried this? Just a question.
We design based on the regulations of the state and the county and.
You got it figured out.
The way it's engineered, it, it's figured out.
Just have the questions addressed to the, to the board itself at this point. All right, so we can get. So I mean, your, your questions have been answered then at this point?
Yeah, basically.
Yeah, yes, yeah, because I mean, we've.
Just so that where the building is.
Okay. All right. So I guess that pretty much addresses the concerns, I guess, regarding the, the wetland area. And, and also the, you know, the septic and the wells, that's all regulated by the Department of Health. And that's outside of our control. So that would be, the engineer would have to take that up with, with, with Dutchess County. They'll, they'll give them an approval upon what they submit to them, which is subject to final approval also. Okay. All right. So I think if everything's been addressed.
How would we know to look out here, offsetting the house? What's the process for that?
I don't know. Amy, is there, is there, is there room to offset the house to one side or another? I know you probably have the building envelope, the, you know, the buildable area probably outlined.
The building envelope is this dashed line that goes around the parcel. That's not the issue. We're trying to limit the disturbance into the flood plain area. You could easily adjust the rotation of the house in that area. I mean, there's room to play with it there, for sure.
How would be part of that process, your decision?
Well, it'd be up to the board to make that decision if the house needs to be moved. I mean, it's a concern is what, that it's just, you feel that it's too close to, to your property? Or there's just not enough screening in between?
From looking at this site this afternoon, the house is facing each other, like our living room, kitchen, dining room, well, yeah, living room, dining room, it's actually right, quite different.
So the front, the front of your house would be facing the new house? That's what you're.
Yeah, it's just, you know.
So if they turn the house so that the side of the house would face your house, is that?
Just a little, I would expect the side of.
Not total, but enough where it's basically.
West or east, if it's possible, then I think we'd better go both ways.
I mean, if they could turn it, I mean, if, if there's the ability to turn it to the side of the house, you know, for the most part is facing your house, then you won't have the concern of their front windows, you know, facing your front windows and having that cross view.
Yeah, and, and just taking into consideration what's going to be a good view for the whoever moves into that house. You know, is it more west, is it more east? And not a large amount, just a, a slight.
Can I, can I comment on this? So first of all, this house right now, where it's shown, is 95 feet away from the front property line, which is probably another 50 feet away from your front property line with the width of the road. And typical subdivisions don't, I mean, houses face each other, that, that's not an unusual thing.
No, no, it's not. Usually across the street, you know, they're usually, if they're right next door, I can understand to some aspect. I mean, I don't know, is there any ability, if there's a little bit of an ability to maybe turn it a little bit?
I can turn it on the plan, but when they apply for the building permit and get a plot plan, you know, it's.
Unless it's a condition of a resolution.
We'll make it a condition of the resolution.
Maybe what the board wants to do is make a condition that the owner of the property have a discussion with the neighbors or, and the engineer and see if there's an ability. And then you can leave it up to, you know, the group to decide. I don't know that the board right now has enough information to decide whether the building should be turned five feet, 15 degrees, anything like that. So I think, you know, the board, if you require the conversation to be had as part of the discussion and then everybody can decide what the.
I mean, just be more with, as long as, I mean, the basic is as long as it's facing, front of the house is basically facing the street, I mean, that would probably.
Well, I think that's how it's designed, isn't it?
There's a tree line, there's an existing tree line there now as well, right?
There are, yes, nice.
We're not proposing to remove those any more than we would need to to put the fill-in for the septic system. They're probably not going to want to come in and clear cut. So right now, can you see into that property through the trees?
Uh, not so much, not in the, not in the summertime. A little bit, but mostly it's up there.
So there is, there is some screening?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's a long screen.
Can we maintain the screening that you proposed with, whatever it might be? I understand that homeowner might want it adjusted for the.
I mean, we could do, I mean, that might be the simplest solution. Maybe we just throw screening as a condition. We'll just leave it as, if we leave it as it is, then we'll just have them screen at the, in between the, between the neighboring property.
No, I think the orientation idea was better, but if, you know, I would also like the screening for all, since you meant, not since, but it was mentioned in my email that, to Dan's point, that there, that there may be things there. The idea being that they would, if they custom, they start with two just.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that offset would be.
Yeah.
The what? Yeah. You're going to have to come up to the microphone, because that was, obviously, nobody's able to hear you.
Sorry, what I'm saying is I think that the offset is a little more important than the, the trees, the screening.
So the offset's more important to you?
To us, yes.
So, all right.
So, sorry. Where is your house on this map?
Yes.
Okay. So it looks, the way it's shown right now would be, it would be offset as it is already. There's a telephone pole that is, if you're looking at this house from your house, it's basically where the right corner of this house is proposed. So I don't know if that gives you a relation of where we're showing. There's a telephone pole right here. So if you're looking out your window and you see that telephone pole, it'll give you a relation of where we're showing the house right now. There's the pole. So if you're looking from your house, it's probably fairly in line with the right corner, right line of the house.
No, that pole is. That's where the pole is. I don't know what that is.
That's a pole. And there's a pole there.
I know this one, I don't know that.
Okay.
And I know this one. So I think this one's.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so if we just turn the house, I guess, it sounds like, well, enough so that the front is not facing their property, I guess that would be, we could make that a condition.
So that's going to be a condition of approval?
Yeah.
Okay. So I mean, to change it on the map is not, they don't ever put the house on the map, where it is on the map when we do a subdivision like this. And the house never looks like that. I shouldn't say never, but.
Right, all right.
I mean, this is just arbitrary location and shape.
How do we, I'm just trying to think ahead when the building permit comes in. How do we know when they're wearing the house on the building permit that it's not directly facing? Even though it's a condition, how do you have to get a real estimate for the permit?
Well, by the, by the, we could have it so that the engineer, when they submit for a building permit, would show not only the, you know, the lot that the house is being built on, but the adjacent lot in question. And they can make that as, as part of the condition, if they show that, the orientation between the two houses. So you'd have to increase, you'd have to show the plot plan and also show the neighbor's house on the plot plan. Would that be reasonable?
Well, then we need to survey their house.
Right, I mean.
That's getting, it's getting.
The problem with that is, right, to show the actual location of their house and the direction, then they're going to have to go out and survey their property in order to show the direct angle and so on, so.
That is, even if we use an approximation from.
I think what Amy's saying now is it doesn't appear that it's directly facing anyway. So I, I don't know that the board has enough information to make the decision. I think if there's a discussion that can be had perhaps between the property owner and the neighbors about where the house might be, they may be able to resolve it with a lot less expense to the applicant than requiring a survey of the neighbor's property. And if one of the conditions that the board should put is to maintain the tree line to the greatest extent practicable, you know, that doesn't interfere with septic and that, obviously.
And sight.
But if you, and sight distance.
And sight distance.
But if you can, you know, the board can add that as a condition to the resolution that it has to maintain the screening to the greatest extent practicable, then I think that would address the concerns.
Oh, I kind of lost half of that.
Sorry.
It's tough because I can't hear you through the mask, that's the other problem.
Go ahead, go ahead, I've got my mask.
Two things. One is make two additional conditions to the resolution. One would be that a discussion be had between the property owners and the adjacent property owners concerning the orientation of the house. And leave it up to them to decide.
Let them make.
Right, because the board doesn't really have enough information to do that. The second condition that the board can make is that the existing screening be maintained to the greatest extent practical, not interfering with septic and sight distance, obviously. But that way, the trees will remain and the view of the house may largely not be an issue after that.
Okay.
I like the screening option better. I see the conversation potentially going south, so, I mean, just the way things are. I think if we can, you know, if we can't maintain trees, we can, we could require additional plantings, something along that line, that we have to maintain some kind of screening or replace.
Screening or screening more of an evergreen type of.
Evergreen or?
Yeah.
Some kind of.
The problem may be if there's any sight distance issues.
We do have a sight distance easement, so.
It would have to be outside that side.
It goes, yeah.
Is there enough room for screening outside of the sight distance?
Well.
It seems like the neighbors are, might be amenable to a slight turn of the house, and I think it may already exist that way. So it may be a very amicable conversation.
It could be.
And it's only, the only requirement is the discussion be had.
Okay. I like it, I like it better now.
It was, I mean, to the best of my knowledge, these.
Oh, you have to get up to the mic, please.
Yeah. To the best of my knowledge, these will be facing each other. I mean, I don't see any offset. And I guess if you're saying that there is an offset, maybe you could explain that more fully. Because I, I don't see it.
Again, this location that's shown on the plan is fairly arbitrary. It's, it changes. A builder's going to come in and change the house shape potentially, and the location of the house on the property will change once they apply for the building permit. When we submit a plot plan, that's when, that's the house location that has to be locked in. So after the subdivision's approved, then the plot plan is what dictates where the house location specifically is. location specifically is.
Well, how can we be part of the discussion before the location of the house is sort of set?
You have in your, you have your opportunity now to state your concerns. And we're trying to address the concerns right now. It's, it makes it difficult for you to dictate to them how you want the house to look. You know, we, we have to interpret the information that you're giving us to make a decision to either allow them to do what they're doing, you know, either with some screening, or, you know, possibly orienta, orienting the house a little differently. But their, their issue becomes is they don't want it to become a decision on your part to what they can do with their property.
Yes, I agree. I just wanna be part of the discussion, because you're saying possibly offset, and I like, I like what Ms. Cobb said as far as, even in an informal discussion, but then I'm hearing from this lady that, well, it would be very hard to do, and we wanna do the screening. So when I hear that, it feels like I won't be part of the process or the decision making.
And this is your opportunity.
Okay, well then I'm-
A public, a public hearing is the opportunity to speak, to issue your concerns regarding, you know, the project.
Well, then my, my concern is this, how, how does this process play out, and how am I part of the decision making? How, how does it, does it run by me, or is the house just gonna go up? I, I don't understand how that works.
So as long as they, as long as they address your concern, then they would be able to move forward.
Okay.
Okay? So I, again, if it's, if it's a matter of just a visual between you and, and your potentially new neighbor-
That could work, yes.
It's, it's, if it's a visual issue, then they, they said, again, we can, we can ask the applicant to put more screening, put some natural, you know, buffer, some, you know, some plants, some trees, so that it actually screens the two properties, then you wouldn't be able to see the, the other, the new house.
As opposed to offsetting the house at a, at a slight angle?
Correct.
Well, then I, I guess my concern is, I, my preference is that the house be offset somewhat. That, that's what I'm asking for. I don't know if, if it sounds maybe like it's, you know, from, I'm sorry, I don't know your name?
Amy.
Sounds like from Amy's point of view, that's not doable. But I don't, I don't know, maybe there's larger considerations.
It's not that it's not doable, it's just, it's a vague request, and-
Right.
For us to determine that we're offsetting it, we would need to survey and locate your house, which is extremely unusual. Like I said, like, typical subdivisions, houses are across the street from each other. It's not unusual that the house be oriented in-
Who do the board members feel?
I don't think that it's fair to put more expense onto the subdivision guy for surveying his property. The house, you don't even know what the house is gonna look like yet. Nobody's picked out a house, they don't know the exact location, so I think we're just really accomplishing nothing right now.
So I mean, they're, if they screen it?
They screen it, that's fine, but he, it sounds like he's not gonna be happy with screening. We can't move forward until we know what exactly they're gonna do, and I don't think it's fair to the person that owns that piece of property.
What's before the board tonight is a subdivision only.
I, then that's what we need to do, is let's approve the subdivision, and that's what, that's it? Because we don't have any details, and we need to move on.
Yeah. But do you wanna adjourn this to, you wanna adjourn this, or you wanna vote on the resolution?
I think we can vote on a resolution.
With amendment for screening?
We'll vote on the resolution for screening.
Okay.
But we can't, can't, how are you gonna do anything else?
What about orientation of the house? Do you want, do you want, do you think that it should be orientated differently, or?
Without any more expense.
Well, I mean, it's, you have, from whatever it is from the street, so you have the-
If we look at the map, we can see.
Yeah.
I don't think that's the final. That's just a lot. That doesn't mean anything.
Right, like I said, it's just an arbitrary shape and location.
But the map is arbitrary?
The location and shape of the house is arbitrary.
Please, hold the comments. So what, you don't feel we have enough information?
No, I don't think that it shows the actual orientation of the home. To determine that it's right, it's looking at its kitchen. Can we put an amendment on this thing? It's not his kitchen, living, but we put amendment on it.
We can amend, we could, we could either amend the resolution we have in front of us to include that, that the applicant is having issues with an orientation between the, you know, with, between the, between the applicant and the neighbor.
Is the landowner here?
Your client is here.
I'm sorry.
Is the owner of the property here?
No, I don't think so.
No, okay.
Yes. What is this for? Who's that, Lori?
Um, Lori spoke already.
Okay. The second one? Oh, Kate?
That was a-
That was, okay, so she did speak, okay. All right, thank you. All right, well, I think at this point, I mean, we need to make the decision, I mean, we've heard the comments.
So can we approve the subdivision and then add an amendment that there has to be a talk between the two?
Yeah, we can do that, if you wish to, if that's what you wanna do.
I think that's the only way to do it.
You don't wanna hook up the front.
Okay. All right, so you wanna make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carries. All right. So, let's go ahead and, if we're gonna go ahead and approve the subdivision, we need to discuss the, the amendments to the resolution. Malcolm, I believe that would be in section number six. Okay. And it would then, we're gonna be adding a, an H to the section six.
And which of the amendments?
Okay, well, I guess the easy one is that the, the engineer must place large boulders on the line for the fifty, sorry, the, the wetland buffer, to delineate-
Every forty feet, delineate the wet buffer.
How many, every?
Every forty feet, follow there, delineate the hundred foot.
All right, and that's in the town code, correct? Yes, all right. So the delineate, so the H will be is to delineate, delineate the wetland? Okay, and then it goes to I, which becomes the more complicated one.
You can simply say that a discussion will be had between the neighbor and the owner of the property as to the angle of offset of the house, proposed house.
Okay.
Go ahead, Barbara.
I'm just trying to think, six months down the road, they have a discussion, and the attorney's not happy.
At the end of the day, it's the property owner's decision, so I think they'll be able to reach an accommodation, because I don't think what they're asking for is that much, but all the board should require is that the discussion be had.
Okay, so they can have, they can have the, they can have the discussion and come up with a, with a reasonable solution for the orientation?
Right.
Okay.
That would be I, and then J, if the board were inclined, would be to maintain the existing screening to the greatest extent practicable. Okay.
Malcolm?
Okay. All right. You guys feel satisfied with those two conditions? I'll address the open concerns. Okay. All right, so could get a motion to approve the subdivision?
I'll make that motion.
As amended?
As amended.
Okay. All right, need a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Our next item on the agenda this evening is Gordon ground-mounted solar panels. It's also for a public hearing.
Thank you.
All right, so, don't have a, probably don't have a presentation for us this evening.
The plan said, if anybody wants to come over here, I don't know where it can lay that, but-
I mean, we've been through this one already.
Yep.
Obviously, the project is to install a ground-mounted solar, actually, two ground-mounted solar systems on the property. I guess at this point, probably easiest to go ahead and, I guess, open the floor for public comment. All right? So at this time, is there anybody that has a-
Bruce, you need to open the-
Oh, sorry, yeah, we have to, all right, did motion open a public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. With that said, is there anyone here that would like to speak on behalf of the Gordon ground-mounted solar system? Yes, sir, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Eric O'Handson, twenty-seven, four-wheel drive. We are the neighbors that are directly adjacent to the property. Our concern, we have no problem with the Gordons putting up solar panels, but our concern is we don't wanna see them. You know, we voiced a bunch of questions that have not been answered yet, and we'd like to know exactly where they're gonna be. Says here that they will be naturally screened from any surrounding neighbors. What is the natural screening?
We did take, we were out to that site for a, for a site visit, probably about a month ago, and the board members, we walked the property, and we didn't see any actual issue. I mean, you're gonna see, the way it's oriented, it looks like you're gonna be looking at, at the end of it, so you're just gonna see the angle of the panel. It's not like it's facing your property. And there is some trees and vegetation in between, at the, at the property line, your property line.
Three months, right? There will be no leaves, it'll be bare, so, you know, we haven't seen what angle these solar panels are gonna be on.
Okay, well, we could, yeah. Have you, have you looked at the plans prior to the meeting?
We looked at a small plan, but it just says the general location, it's not exact.
I mean, it's going to the complete opposite side of the property, that, you know, of your neighbor's property, so it's going up on the hill, up to the highest point of the hill. So from your house, it's not gonna be very big, it's almost like you're gonna be looking at a shed.
A shed?
With the distance, it's not-
What is the direction of the, where, that they capture the sunlight, I mean?
The direction it will be facing would be, actually, to the south, actually, Nick, you were with us, with Marcos when we, when we pulled out the compass, so it's actually-
East, southeast?
Yes.
Away from his, away from your problem.
Yes, it would be towards that.
We're, we're southwest.
Excuse me?
We are southwest, I believe.
Yeah, but it's facing southeast, it's not turned to your problem, it's facing the other direction.
I mean, so the natural screening is what, just the trees that are there?
Is the trees that are there, correct.
You know, you're talking a solar field almost as big as this room.
You'll be looking down the end of it, you'll see the end of it, you won't be looking straight on at the complete panel. Okay.
I would like to see it.
Sure. Here, I'll show you, one of your properties here. This is where, you'll be looking on kind of the side of it, it's southernmost exposure, so it's gonna be this, tilted this way. The angle's going towards actually the problem.
So southernmost, and you're south.
Yep. And then we do have the mark out and survey properly what exact location we're looking, but it's not gonna, you know, you have to buy the setback. This one, it's over forming here, and where you are.
All right, you know, we, we did look, again, we were out to the property, we did look at it, and we didn't see the significant impact from the, you know, visually, because there is that, there is the, you know, the tree line that was left behind partially on your property and partially on the, on the applicant's property.
You know, our second floor is also very high, looking over their property, you know, over twenty-two feet.
Right, but the, again, the, the trees do grow up in between.
All righty.
All right, is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, sir, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Thomas Strinees, we own seven eighty-five Wheeler Hill Road, which is, excuse me, Thomas Strinees?
Yeah.
Of seven eighty-five Wheeler Hill Road. We share a property line with the Gordons, and I'm just speaking on their behalf. Super sweet people, concerned about all their neighbors, I'm sure they're gonna do the best they can doing this application and installation, and take extremely good care of their property, so I'm sure that whatever they do will be the best that can be done on an eighteen-acre piece of property. It's a large property, probably about three hundred, four hundred feet from our property line to the other side of the property line, which the, is where the location of the solar panels would be, and it's just something that I wanna support, really. I think solar is the way that we have to go, and I think that it's a good thing, and they'll do it right. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who's to make comments regarding the Gordon ground-mounted solar panels? Okay, seeing that there's no more comments, could I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? So the motion carries. Okay. We have a resolution in front of us that was prepared by the planner. I'll ask the board, is there any modifications that anyone feels need to be done to the resolution at this time? All right, so if there is no modifications that need to be made, is it, oh, if there's no modifications need to be made at this time, can we get a motion to approve the resolution as written?
I'll bet. Second.
Okay, so the motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Okay. Our next item on the agenda- Our next item on the agenda this evening is adjourned public hearing for Tarpon Towers Two LLC Wireless Telecommunications Facility. Will we get a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just let me just clarify, is there people in the hallway that want to come in for the public hearing?
Neil, just so you know, I'm not, I'm gonna bug out halfway through, you know Paul? Paul is gonna be taking it. It's gonna be Jim that signs it. Jim Heran, so. Yeah, sorry.
You too. Okay. Alright, so at this time, I mean, we've opened the public hearing. We'll let the applicant, the brief overview of the project again, and then we will open the floor for public comments.
I don't know if you have any ground rules you want to set out there.
Oh, well, I'll, I'll read off my little statement prior to opening the floor.
So, good evening, everybody, my name is Alexander, partner, Cuddy and Fader, here on behalf of Tarpon Towers. I will do my best to enunciate behind the mask. If I need to repeat myself, let me know. Also with me tonight is Stephen Matthews from Tectonic Engineering. We were last in front of you on May 18th for a public, that was our initial public hearing on this. We made a supplemental submission to you based upon the comments that were in outgrowth of that hearing in particular. We reiterated and provided more information about our emissions compliance, and we also submitted studies and references to New York-based studies in, in the Mid Hudson Valley, and also in front of the Connecticut Siting Council with regard, regard to no diminution in property values associated with wireless facilities. Since then, we were in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a public hearing on the 23rd, and we just made a submission to you of providing some additional information going back to some comments early on from the town planner. In particular, the New York State Department of State has issued their state coastal consistency concurrence, concluding that process, which is very much consistent with what Chippo had said, because there's, additionally, it came up during the zoning board of appeals, they were seeking confirmation as to the fact that this tower not need, need to be lit or striped or marked otherwise, which we were able to, which we have confirmed, and we submit, we will be submitting that officially to the ZBA, but we also figured since we were gonna be in front of you, we'd give you a copy of that. The last thing we did was submit relative to site plan as opposed to tonight where we're here for seeker, but relative to site plan, we brought, we addressed some of the last lingering items relative to the April and May CPL engineering comments that they had had. Ultimately, that is, is where we are for the continued hearing on this facility. We are hopeful that you will adopt a secret negative declaration this evening, and I think that is really the end of our presentation, other than to note that we gave you the first extension, and we've also given you a second extension of the shot clock, which would run to August 19th, and are looking forward to the town signing that, you know, counter-signing that, that's on, on the end of our submissions. And I think that is everything I can think of. I think that, that pretty much covers most of it.
Okay. Alright, so before I open up the floor to public comment, alright, this is a continuation of public hearing for Tarpon Towers. The purpose of the public hearing is to accept public comment and any important relative information regarding the product, project. It is not the function of the planning board to promote or oppose certain projects. If it complies with the appropriate sections of the zoning law, and if the application is consistent with all criteria set forth in the zoning law, the planning board has no authority to deny the application. After the applicant's professionals have made their presentations and described the project in its entirety, the hearing will be open for public comment. Those speaking must identify themselves and state clearly their name and address. All comments are to be directed at the planning board and not the applicant or the applicant's professionals. For the sake of expediency, redundant comments will not be entertained, but will be acknowledged and be already brought to the attention of the planning board. No cross-talk between the applicant and the public will be allowed during the public hearing, and the duration of each individual comment will be limited to three minutes. So at this time, I'll open up the floor for public comment. So, is there anybody that wishes to speak at this time? Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Andrew Campanelli. I'll do my best to speak through a mask. I'm an attorney, my address is 1757 Merrick Avenue, Suite 204 Merrick, New York. I'm here this evening representing 31 homeowners. I want to address first the three-minute time limit placed on speakers. I have to respond that in two ways. Number one, it is impossible for me to comply with federal law and submit substantial evidence before this board to rebut the evidence which has been submitted by the applicant. If necessary, all 31 of my clients are here this evening, they're willing to allot their three minutes to me, but I'm gonna need about 20 minutes. And I respectfully submit to you, if you don't give me three minutes, it will be in violation of the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996, as it's been interpreted by the US federal district courts in the Eastern District of New York. So I'm gonna need 20 minutes, sir. And the, the benefit of that is, my clients are not gonna repeat what I do, so you can probably save an awful lot of time if you just let me use my...
So you're gonna, so you're gonna speak on behalf of all the neighbors and the...
For the most part, one or two may have a few additional comments, but they're not gonna repeat everything that I say, so I can sum it up succinctly, and you'll probably save a whole lot of time.
Alright, I'll give you the latitude.
Thank you, sir. So I haven't had the, the opportunity to appear before this board, and you don't know me, but I am an attorney, I handle cell tower cases, not just across the entire state of New York, but the entire United States. The Telecommunications Act of 1996 is kind of my forte. I've reviewed the application, all of the submissions by this applicant, and I respectfully submit that the application for special permit, wetland permit, and site plan approval must be denied if you apply for code. The reason is, not only would this application and installation violate the letter of your code, it would actually inflict upon the nearby property owners the specific types of adverse impacts your code was designed to prevent. If you read your code, chapter 240, it's very clear, it's what I call a smart planning provision. Provisions like this have been adopted by local governments across the entire United States, and it lets, sets forth in chapter 240, the specific intent, meaning the specific types of adverse impacts the town sought to prevent when it adopted this special permit requirement in the first place. Those include, by way of example, avoiding to the greatest extent possible adverse aesthetic impacts, reduction in property values, things like that. So I'm gonna address those issues, because that's what your code requires. So as initial matter, I respectfully submit that contrary to what has been represented by the applicant, and in violation of your code, if this were to be approved, it would inflict a very substantial adverse impact on the nearby property owners. Now, logic would dictate, a 15-story tower placed in an area where no, no structures other than homes stand more than two stories in height will stand out like a sore thumb. There's no question this will have a dramatic adverse impact aesthetically on the nearby properties. Now, how do you know whether or not an adverse aesthetic impact exists? Well, according to federal courts, which provides guidance, federal courts have ruled that the persons in the best position to know and understand the nature of an adverse aesthetic impact they will suffer are the property owners themselves. And so substantial evidence can be presented to this board by letters, personalized letters from the homeowners. According to the United States Court of Appeals for the Second Circuit, that constitutes substantial evidence. Now, I use the term substantial evidence because that's what federal law requires. You can't deny this application unless the denial is based upon substantial evidence. So one of the first things I provided, and I hope you have a copy of the brief, I submitted a brief to the board, as well as supporting exhibits under separate cover. I'm hoping everybody got a copy of that. We submit enough copies for every member of the planning board and every member of the zoning board of appeals. Attached as exhibit B are personalized letters from the homeowners, which lay out the adverse aesthetic impact each of them will suffer if this massive 15-story tower is irresponsibly placed this close to their home. Issue number one. Number two, property values. There's no question that if you place a 15-story tower this close to homes, oh, by the way, let me get back to the adverse aesthetic impact. The applicant has submitted some type of visual impact analysis, and I respectfully submit to you, it's defective on its face, and the applicant knows it's defective on its face, and here's why. What is the purpose of a visual impact analysis? The whole purpose for a visual impact analysis is to give this board an accurate depiction of the adverse aesthetic impact that the homeowners will suffer. Not surprisingly, when applicants submit these things, they submit photographs taken from various perspectives, but they always omit photographs taken from the actual homeowner's properties. It got so bad that in 2005, the United States Circuit Court of Appeals for the Second Circuit ruled that where, as in this case, the applicant submits zero photographs taken from the actual nearby residences, it's defective and should be ignored by this board. Not only has that been federal law for 15 years, Tarpon knows it, and the reason I tell you that is, right now, Tarpon has another application pending in the town of Thompson. In that case, they went on the neighbor's properties, took photographs from the neighbor's properties, and gave them to the board. My question to this board is, why didn't they do it for you? Do you think they don't know they're supposed to do it? They didn't. Their visual impact analysis is completely defective and should be ignored entirely. Now, for property values, similarly, federal courts have chimed in and ruled what constitutes evidence of reduction in property values. Annexed to the, annexed as exhibits to the opposition that we filed are brokers' letters as licensed professionals, each of whom give their professional opinion saying, if this facility is built, it's gonna reduce the value of these nearby homes by 15 to 20 percent. Now, according to the federal courts, the homeowners don't have to give appraisals, these right licensed real estate brokers constitute substantial evidence of the reduction in property values that these properties would suffer if this tower is built. It constitutes substantial evidence. These brokers are not just any brokers, they're brokers that are brokers here. They're not just familiar with real estate markets, they have an acute understanding of this specific real estate market, and they cite their professional opinion that if this tower goes up, it's gonna reduce the value of the nearby homes for 15, by 15 to 20 percent, which is specifically the type of adverse impact your code, chapter 240, was specifically designed to prevent. In fact, it says, you can't grant a special permit if you, unless you can find it's not gonna adversely impact property values. So granting the application would not only violate the code, but it would violate the intent of the code. Now, one of the things that I found troubling is, when I went through the application, I realized, this applicant has provided you zero hard data, nothing, no data whatsoever. And I couldn't understand why, and I'll tell you what I'm talking about. There are two types of needs which necessitate the building of a new tower. Tarpon doesn't need the tower for itself, it's not a carrier, it doesn't provide any personal wireless services. Tarpon is a site developer, it makes money building towers, that's the only reason we're here. The two types of needs which necessitate a new tower are a gap in coverage or capacity deficiency. In either case, if one actually exists, it is very easy and inexpensive for them to give you direct evidence. Here's how. Generally speaking, if they're claiming the need is for a gap in service, they do a simple drive test, take a phone, attach a recording device, you drive through two hours, and you'll get 300 signal strength recordings. They present that to the board, and it will give the board, number one, it'll show you if there's a gap, where it is, and the precise boundaries for the gap. Now, why do boards require this? Because without this data, you have no way of knowing. If there is a gap, and I'm not saying there's no gap at all, but if there is a gap, you a, have no way of knowing if this tower will remedy the gap. And if it's not, as is the case many times, and you approve this tower, six from now, months from now, they can come back and ask you for another tower, because the first tower didn't fill the gap, because you don't know where the gap is, because they didn't give you the data. Similarly, if the gap is a deficiency in capacity, it's a completely different animal. That means they have coverage, but the system gets overloaded. Well, what hard data do they give you for that? Simple, drop call records. If Verizon were to have a capacity deficiency here, they can go on their computer system, punch in a few keystrokes, and print out a report showing you exactly how many drop calls there were, for any specific time, for any geographic area. There is not a shred of probative evidence at all showing you there's a gap or deficiency in capacity, and I think I know why. Fortunately, Verizon has its own database, which shows exactly where they have coverage and the level of coverage. If you go onto Verizon's website, they have an interactive website which is basically interrelated with their database. It allows you to access their database. You could punch in any address, and you will get, number one, a map showing the existence of any significant gaps and any capacity deficiency. I did that. I went to Verizon's website, and I punched in the specific address where they want to put this tower, and according to Verizon's own database, Verizon has no significant gap in coverage at this specific location, and the level of coverage there, capacity, is excellent. It's the best level of service anywhere Verizon has, anywhere in the United States, which is why you don't have hard data. I don't even believe this is a 4G tower, I think it's a 5G tower, that's just my opinion, I can't prove it. What I can tell you is this, this applicant has not provided a shred of probative evidence to establish there's a need for this tower, much less a tower at this height, much less at this location. And if that's not bad enough, if you were to adopt, if you were to approve this tower at 150 feet, once it's built, under the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012, at any time, Tarpon could increase the height of the tower by another 20 feet, and you would be powerless to stop them. So if you approve 150-foot tower, it may end up being 170. So please keep that in mind. By the way, does anybody have any questions? You should get the impression I've done this a few times across the entire United States, I'm admitted to federal courts in 23 states, so I know the federal law. So we've talked about adverse impact on aesthetics and property values, and what your, what your code requires. Sorry, I can't lift my fingers with my mask. The other deficiency in their application is, again, they can't prove that this intrusive location is the least intrusive means of whatever gap they claim to exist. Most often, what'll, smart planning provisions and smart jurisdictions will try to work for smart planning provisions. They are designed to achieve three goals simultaneously. They're designed to let carriers like Verizon saturate an area of coverage, but at the same time, and your code says it, the second goal is to minimize the number of towers you need to provide that coverage, and to the greatest extent possible, prevent unnecessary adverse impacts on residences and residential areas. And the way you do that is you require them to give you hard data to show where the gaps are, and to see if there are potential alternative locations that would be less intrusive. I looked at this site, and this is just a horrible site. It's almost as if they said, let's pick the worst place we can put it, on this huge parcel, and let's put it there. There are alternative sites where this could go, which it wouldn't have as substantial an adverse impact on the neighbors. And denying it based upon that alone would be consistent with your code. So I would ask that you deny the application, I would ask that in doing so, again, it's not enough for me that you deny it, I want to make sure that you deny it in a way which does not violate the Telecommunications Act of 1996. So if you choose to deny it, as I believe you should, I ask that you issue a separate written decision, and in that decision, you make separate factual determinations about adverse aesthetic impact, reduction in property values, and when you do, cite the evidence based upon which you make those decisions. You thereby make your decision less susceptible to challenge, because a lot of carriers will come in, or site developers will come in and say, oh, you know, if you don't agree with us, we'll sue you in federal court, which by the way, is a completely hollow threat, because even if you somehow violate Telecommunications Act, and they sue you and they win, they don't get a penny from the town. They can't win damages, they can't win attorney's fees, so all they get is a permit. That's all I have to say, if you have any questions, please ask, if not, I thank you for your time.
And board members, are there questions for...
How did you get the evidence that this area is not suitable for this tower, and that there are other suitable areas for a tower, such as this size?
I'm sorry, how did I get the evidence that there are other...
Yeah, how do you know that there's other locations in the town, in that area, that this tower can go, that won't be an impact on anybody?
Okay, well, a couple of things. One of the problems is, and, and I have to restate the most basic proposition, the applicant has the burden of establishing where the tower should go, not me. But that being said, the problem is, I have no hard data. If they gave me hard data, normally what I do is I look at Google Earth and I study the area... the area and I find the best place. If I could put it on a landfill, or a junkyard, or woods, that's the best. But the starting place is, I can't tell you how to remedy a gap until they show us where the gap is. They haven't done that. Now, there are plenty of open spaces. I have looked at the town of Wapinsure, there's plenty. My clients, I have 31, they all told me million different places, and some of them will probably tell you alternative sites. And my suggestions to them is, yeah, that's way out of the way, and nobody can see it, that would be great. The problem is, without the hard data showing you where the gap is, I have no way of determining if it's going to remedy the gap, nor do you. Their submission, as far as a gap, would not be accepted by any state or federal court anywhere in the country as evidence. It has zero probative value. There's no affidavit, there's no test results, there's no signal strengths. I have no idea where there's a gap. I'm not saying coverage is perfect. What I know is this, according to Verizon, there's no significant gap in coverage. I'm not saying there's no gap, and I'm not saying coverage is perfect. There could be gaps. But the starting point is, as a board, you should require the applicant to meet their burden. Show us exactly where the gap is. Don't give us fluff and computer modeling. Give us the actual data, just like all other towns in New York do. Give us the data, we'll see exactly where the gap is, and then we can decide for ourselves if this is a smart place to put the facility, because if it's not, they're going to be back in six months for another tower, you can bank on it. Any other questions, gentlemen?
Yes, the case, the OmniPoint versus City of White Plains?
Yes.
Does that case stand for the proposition that if you do not receive any assessment or information, or you take a view from the homeowners who are actually affected by the cell tower, then you can disregard the other evidence submitted as a view assessment, a visual assessment?
Well, I can actually read through the words from the federal court. So rather than paraphrase, let me give the actual language from the judge, because he made it crystal clear. And the judge who issued this just passed away two weeks ago, which was a shame, he was a brilliant judge. Here's what the judge said. Quote, "The board was free to discount OmniPoint's study because it was conducted in a defective manner. The observation points were limited to locations accessible to public roads, and no observations were made from the residents' backyards, much less from their second-story windows," end quote. And it's OmniPoint Communications, Inc. versus the City of White Plains, 430 F Second, Second Circuit, 2005. That's 15 years ago, that hasn't changed. In fact, whenever, when asked, Tarpon has done precisely that. And I have an example, Town of Thompson, the case is going on right now.
So that decision hasn't been reversed?
No, it hasn't.
And I guess the only way to reverse it is the Supreme Court of the United States?
That's correct.
And as far as you know, has there been any state appeals court reversing that or modifying that decision?
No. Every single case I've handled, I've handled thousands of them, every single case where I brought up the issue and made the board aware that this is what's supposed to happen, they've always required them to provide photographs taken from the property owner's properties. Sometimes the applicant will say, "Well, you know, we can't just walk in their property, we'd have to get an authorization," to which I respond, and my clients respond, "We'd love to have you come on our property. Come, I'll sign an authorization. I would like you to take a photograph from my backyard."
Have these clients, have you always been given an instruction to authorize photographs being taken from their house?
They don't even know how to contact Tarpon directly. I mean, they can call up and ask and invite them on their property? Again, it's not my client's obligation to file the application, it's Tarpon's obligation. And if Tarpon is to fulfill its obligation of a visual impact analysis, meaning to give this board an accurate depiction of the adverse aesthetic impacts that neighbors are going to suffer, it's their job to get the proper photographs, and they know it. OmniPoint came down 15 years ago. The only court that's higher is the U.S. Supreme Court, and they didn't do it. Why did they do it for Thompson, and why did they not do it here, unless they don't want to give you an accurate visual image of what this is going to look like from people who live as close as these people do? Any other questions? Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the time, thank you very much, and I thank all of you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, come on up, I'll get to you next. Please state your name and address for the record.
Charles Davenport, Princess Circle, Wapinsure Falls, New York. I'm not a member of the group represented by the lawyer here, but I want to say a few words. First of all, I appreciate the job that this planning board does as a representative of the people of this town. It's a job that I couldn't do, one of the many jobs that I couldn't do. So you have my appreciation for that.
Thank you.
Now, as a representative of we the people on any level, state, local, federal, you have no obligation to further the interests of any one individual or any corporation, and you're well aware of that. I have some objections on the health of the health effects of this installation. There are many people who are seriously worried about the preponderance of electromagnetic radiation in the world and in the environment. And in the spirit of the Fourth of July, I'm going to hold my comments to self-evident truth, okay? First of all, in France, Wi-Fi has been banned in schools for kids up to six years of age, electromagnetic radiation. There have been studies done to show that when you hold a cellphone next to your ear and talk, that cellphone warms up your brain. And last, when I buy a microwave, they have a warning on it that says, "Don't stand too close to it, and make sure that it's protected, that it's always, the protection is always in place." So with that in mind, we can extrapolate what these cell towers might be doing to us. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it's the gentleman in the back.
Good evening. My name is Mark Springer. I live at 108 Caroline Drive East, which is one of the, I believe, eight homes that the zoning board has been, they've requested a variance on the regulations for a cell tower not being within 750 feet, I believe is the regulation on record. You know, I just want to say, you know, if you think about what that means, you know, I said before the zoning board, I said this last week to them, and they said they take their direction from you. So I'd just like to repeat what I said there, which was, the variance being requested is not just 10 feet onto my property, it's the entirety of my property, it's the entirety of my neighbor's property, it's the entirety of the road in front of my property, and it's 25 feet into the properties across the street. So when you think about what that zoning board variance request is, that's every night when I go to bed, every night my children go to bed, they're within that variance. You know, and those regulations are put into place for a reason. Somebody didn't just arbitrarily come up with 750 feet, that you can't put a cell tower within a property. That number was created and put into code for a reason. And, you know, we're not talking about a 10-foot variance for a shed, we're talking about a variance that's going to affect a lot of people in the entirety of our properties, you know, across a public road, the entirety of the properties across the street, and that just seems really, really ridiculous. And it's something I would like you to consider. Again, I'd like to echo what some of the other people said, thank you for the work you do here, and I do appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, is there anyone else? Yes, the person with your hand raised, come on up.
Lou Benya, 90 Chelsea Road.
Was it full name again?
Lou Benya. Pretty much what this gentleman just reiterated, you have 28.5 acres, sir, in the town of Wapinsure, and got 150-plus-foot cell tower. Six variances have been applied for. That's pretty excessive on 28.5 acres of land within 500 feet of our homes. Do you see a problem there, sir? Do you see how close that is? There isn't enough room, there isn't enough acreage or property back there to implement this safely. It's just wrong, it's just wrong. There are better areas for this to be built, safer. I can only imagine the liability. You've got a football field and a half away from this tower. It's not just one or two homes that are affected here, sir, it's a lot of homes that are affected. A lot of people who paid into this community, paid their taxes, kept their lawns and their homes beautiful. It doesn't make sense, it just doesn't make sense. I don't know how, sir, at the end of my street, there's a sign. I'm sure you've seen that sign, sir. You know what that sign says? It says, "A Hudson Valley Greenway Community in the Hamlet of Chelsea." How does this 170-foot-plus tower fit in that Greenway community? I've talked about a pond, there's an approximate seven-acre pond that's back there, and no one has even talked about that. Who's responsible for that, sir, if I wake up one morning and there's a blue sheen of diesel fuel over that? No one care? We care about bats, that's what the DEC cares about, sir, bats. Interesting, interesting. How much fuel will be stored back there, sir? Do we know, above-ground, below-ground tanks? Is it diesel? Is it propane? Is it natural gas? What's powering the generator, sir, back there?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I don't have the plans in front of me right now.
Okay.
But we'll, again, you're here tonight to give us your comments, and then it is our job to go ahead and get those comments addressed, okay?
Okay, understandable. Well, I want to thank you for your time, I appreciate it, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, the woman here with the blue shirt?
I think if I'm here six feet, I can take this down, right?
You can take it down, yes.
Thank you. Denise Van Buuren, 86 Chelsea Road. The back of my property joins immediately butts this property in question. So we bought our home in 2001, and we have worked very hard to retain its rural character. I have almost six acres, historic 1840 farmhouse, a historic brick barn with a slate roof. We worked very hard to retain the rural agricultural nature of our property. To place a 170-foot tower in our backyard will have irreparable impact on our property value. This one property owner stands to gain a sizable monthly fee as a result of having a for-profit tower on her property. The rest of us who are gathered here tonight, who signed the letter together, stand to have our properties reduced by 25 percent in value. Imagine the impact that that will have on the rest of us. So I just urge you to consider thoughtfully the fact that planning rules and zoning rules are there for a reason, to protect the greater good of the vast majority of the town residents, not to benefit the individual property owners who have the potential to irreparably harm the rest of us who live in Chelsea because we love the rural nature of our hamlet. There are many commercial sites in the town of Wapinsure, as you well know, which a facility like this could be placed. There is no reason to destroy the rural ambiance of our properties. Please consider that thoughtfully. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Hold on, the woman here in the white jacket.
I'm Cynthia Lidford. I live at 114 Caroline Drive East, and I am impacted by this tower. The speakers prior have given very good reason to carefully have everyone consider what is happening. The possibilities of impacting the health and welfare of people who live in the area is one thing. There has been nothing given to us to say that there is or isn't, and there may not be, I don't know. The other thing is that, all right, we're being given, we give so much in terms of what they want. Are they going to take that amount off our taxes and pay the taxes to the town for that variance? And certainly, we're going to lose a large amount of the value of our homes. Now, we have, in this area, many of us have paid taxes for many years, and now we have this impact on us which causes us to have a loss. It would be, and I'm sure that somebody's going to do this, I'm just, I'm not experienced at all of this, but there must be another place that the tower can be, and people can come and say, "Okay, there's a tower, well, I'm going to buy a house here." That's their decision. We didn't have any decision to that. What the tower will do to us is automatically drop our property value, possibly impact on our health, and many other things. What I have, I just don't have the wherewithal at this time to speak about, but it needs very great consideration in terms of what is done with this tower. The tower will take away from our area. I know it has something to give, but maybe you can give it somewhere else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? The woman over here with the black mask, come on up.
Not the orange dress?
The orange dress. I just, I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure of the color.
Hi, everybody, I'm Maria Harrison. I live at 106 Caroline Drive East. As you can see, these are our neighbors here, we showed up, we're very concerned about the tower being put in our backyard. We take great pride in our neighborhood, and I just still can't determine why. I just don't see the need. It doesn't have a place in our neighborhood. We're homes, we're a residential area. There's no business for that kind of tower to be there. I invite you, please, come to my yard. We spend so much time out in our yard, our front yards, everybody keeps their yards up. We're out in our backyard all the time, I really can't even imagine having that monstrosity out there. Right now, we have trees, what happens in the winter, and I think there's a sound that comes off that, I don't know for sure, but there's a sound, and I just, I ask you, please consider us, and I really have the offer out, please come see how it will really impact our neighborhood and bring down the values of our homes. And we work so hard to keep up. We were all trying, we work, we all work full-time, we try to keep up, and there's just no place for it, and I just ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, come on up.
Hi, I'm Robyn LeCary. I live at 15 Red Hawk Hollow Road in Wapinsure. Mr. Alexander proposes that there will be no decrease of property values and submitted a 2011 report from Robert Bergdorf, Nixon Peabody LLP, to support this claim. I submitted a report that was published February 18, 2017, in the Journal of Real Estate Finance and Economics, Wireless Towers and Home Values. The Journal of Real Estate Finance and Economics is published by Springer Science and Business Media, which is a global publishing company of books, ebooks, and peer-reviewed journals in science, humanities, technical, and medical publishing, with 17 million members and 130 million publications. It's a very valid article. The areas that were researched was in Alabama, Florida, and Kentucky. The authors summarized that according to their research, properties located within the distance of .72 kilometers, which is 2,362 feet, so I think that's less than a half a mile, to the closest tower resulted with property values declining 2.46 percent. That's according to their distance, okay? The properties where the... The properties where the tower was actually visible had a decrease of their property value of up to 9.78%. So this is common sense. If it doesn't make sense, it's not true. If I want to buy a home, and there are two similar homes, one with a cell phone tower and the other without a cell phone tower in the backyard, I and everyone else here probably would choose to, you know, the one without the cell phone tower, unless there was a significant decrease in the value of the other home. Okay. I'm also submitting... Well, there's a memorandum opinion in the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Virginia, Cell Co. Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, and CWS, the Seventh LLC, as plaintiffs against the Board of Supervisors of Fairfax County, Virginia, as the defendant. I bring this up because they won... The Board of Supervisors won their case against... Actually, Verizon was kind of knocked out of the case. They weren't found as being pertinent. It ended up being the... Something like the Tar Pound, the CWS, the Seventh. And the reason was, and this kind of... It's kind of similar to our town, all right? Is they won because the building of a cell phone tower was inconsistent with multiple provisions of the town's comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances. Okay? So this is against our zoning ordinance. We know that. But as far as we do have a comprehensive plan in the town of Wappinger. They... So the court found in favor of the board because the... Let's see. The plan directs applicants to avoid constructing new telecommunications structures and to seek instead to locate proposed facilities on existing structures. When existing structures are not available, the comprehensive plan states the new structures should be built where there is the greatest opportunity to conceal and minimize their visual impact. In particular, the comprehensive plan requires designing the facility so as to minimize its impact on the character of the property and surrounding areas. The court found that according to the Board of Supervisors of Fairfax County's comprehensive plan, the board had the responsibility to ensure that the facility be harmonious with neighboring properties and would not adversely affect the use of development of neighboring properties or impair the value of those properties. So I just wanted to point out the similarities. We don't have anything in our comprehensive plan that deals directly with cell phone towers. But it certainly talks about the view of how the planning should go in our community. So I just want to point out a few things, okay? This is coming right out of our comprehensive plan, which was adopted by the town of Wappinger in 2010. It's on the chapter, "Community Appearance and Character." A: "We are to preserve the qualities that make this community attractive: convenient transportation, natural beauty, and community character." You hear that word, "community character," a lot. "The comprehensive plan generally seeks to focus new development in existing developed areas, encourage cluster development that protects open space, and higher aesthetic standards for commercial development." C: "Encourage development with high aesthetic standards to provide a visual and natural environment that will promote economic stability, enhance community character, and will be compatible with surrounding land uses. While the town cannot legally or ethically bar the doors to all new development, the town can commit to carefully guiding the form of that development. Any future development of commercial land uses should be well-designed to fit in with the sites and should preserve and promote positive neighborhood district features so that community character is protected and enhanced." Last one. "Community character contributes to quality of life that should be understood as part of the town's strength in attracting highly skilled employees and high-paying employers." Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. All right. Is there anyone else? Just the woman there in the blue shirt? If you want to come on up to the microphone.
My name is Carla Springer. I'm at 108 Caroline Drive. One of the homes that will encompass, be part of the variance, that you're looking to variance for my entire property. There are a number of reasons why I believe a cell tower should not be placed in our backyard next to the wetlands and the endangered animals. There are fires. And if you look into it and you do your research, cell towers catch fire. Our backyard is all woods. That cell tower catches on fire. My house burns down and takes, who knows else? Who else's house is down with it? They also come along with collapsing. You can look it up. They collapse. I could be in my backyard, and a cell tower now could collapse on me while I'm doing my gardening. It won't affect you. It won't affect you. But that cell tower's going to be in my backyard, and I could be gardening and die. Read about it. They collapse. The generator that will be at the site... I haven't gotten the actual... I don't know if you have. What type of generator it'll be, so we know exactly what type of noise it'll make. But if you come to our area, you will find that if a dog is in the neighbor's yard across the way, it echoes through the neighborhood. If the chickens are running through the neighborhood and they're squawking or do whatever the chickens do, that... Everyone can hear the chickens. Everyone can hear the dogs. Everyone can hear each other talk at times, depending on how noisy the day is. And everything reverberates. It echoes. I'm out there hammering on my front porch. The entire neighborhood can hear it. So picture yourself in the wintertime when you're using your generator. It's a great sound because you have electricity, because the power's out, and you've got your generator going, and the electricity's working. Picture it if you don't want. If you've got your electricity working perfectly fine, and this echoing noise of a generator is now in your head all the time, because I don't know that it turns on or off or what it does, but I know that it will be mostly in our lives every day in our peaceful, quiet neighborhood. Come to the neighborhood. Like Maria said, come check out our area. Come have some coffee with us. Have tea on the porch. It's a quiet, peaceful, loving area, and you're thinking about putting a fire tower, a collapsing tower, a tower who knows what could happen with the noise and if it's going to endanger our bats or our birds or anything. Do you know what I mean? I mean, picture you living in my house and someone saying, "Guess what? Your entire property is not yours. Now it's mine. It's in a variance that I can do whatever I want with." Now, I don't know enough about variances, but I know that I don't want my property in that variance. Laws are put into place for a reason, to protect people. Planning boards, zoning boards are there to protect our children, our family, our neighborhoods, and our homes, to keep them safe. Laws are there to make sure big businesses and small business owners don't encroach on our lives and our health and our rights. There are a number of reasons why a cell tower should not be put and placed in our backyard. But the main reason that you must remember is that no tower can be closer than 750 feet to a dwelling. There should be no variance for that. No tower should be within 750 feet. Do you want it next to your house?
Please, could you please address just the board? This is... This is all? I read this in the beginning?
I didn't mean that.
It's not for... Right. So it's just for... We're here to collect information tonight. Again, this is the 750-feet issue is with the zoning board of appeals, which we don't...
Right, no. But you all know about it, and it's there to keep us safe. And I just want to know...
So we've got your comments, and we will address them. Thank you. Okay. The gentleman in the back with the maroon shirt? Come on up. I'll get to you next.
I, Seth Flamholtz, 110 East Caroline Drive. I'll be brief. It's a... My home is also... Is one of the bigger variances. It's 200 feet. But I'm asking the board, the planning board, to protect us on this. I mean, you're here to protect us as well. Just to think about, would you approve this in your neighborhood? In your backyard? I mean, I don't know what, you know, the financial gain is, you know, at this farm. It's none of my business. I don't know. But it's not worth the impact that's going to happen in my neighborhood and the community. It's going to have bad effects. I mean, you've heard many of my neighbors tell you about them. And just do you do diligence? You know, fact-check all the facts that you presented by, you know, the client? Just make sure everything's fine. And just don't approve it. I mean, that's all I'm asking.
Okay. Thank you. All right. This gentleman in the back, yes? Come on up.
My name is Donald Bowles. I live at 94 Chelsea Road. I've lived there since 1986. Our property was originally part of the Hobbit Hill Horse Forum, so it shows you how close we are. The cell tower will be right smack in the middle of my backyard. As I sit on my deck and look out my backyard, I will see the cell tower. That is where the balloon test showed. It will have a very adverse effect on the aesthetics of my property. It will have a profound effect on the value of my property, and I just implore the board to make the right decision based on the laws that were put in effect and as are duly representatives to this process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Yes, gentleman with teal shirt?
Good evening. My name is Chris Barkley. I live at 86 Chelsea Road. I know these are tough decisions that you folks have to make. I've been in your place. I've been on a planning board before, and I know when folks come to speak to you, you have to take a lot into consideration. I know you have to listen to the applicants, and you listen to the folks, in this case, who are opposed to this. But I implore you to put yourself in our position. Walk out your back door on your property, which I'm sure everybody has a beautiful property. You're on this board, and think of a 15-story monstrosity in your backyard as you come out. Now, you know aesthetically, it's going to kill your view, and it'll be bad when you look out your back door and you try to enjoy your property. But it's also going to kill our property values. Just think about how this is going to kill our property values. So just think about that, and don't be afraid to say no. Like I said, I've been in your position, and sometimes it's tough to say no. But please do. This does not belong here. And I think you folks kind of know that deep down your heart, that this is not the right place to put a 15-story tower. So please consider that. You know, you're our representative. The town board members appoint you to these positions. They're our elected representatives. So in a way, you're our representatives here to help protect us. So again, I implore you, don't be afraid to say no as far as this goes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, counsel. Brett Van Buren, 86 Chelsea Road. Looking at Verizon's own data that they provided for this and that they have available online. If you go to Verizon.com, you can actually see the quality of cell phone coverage in your own area. If you pinpoint down to 86 Chelsea Road, you're told that you have great coverage. Whereas in their report that was provided by the towers company, they tell you that there's a need for this. So either the company itself is lying, which you need to take into consideration, or this tower isn't actually needed. And if you look at the map, the 800 gigahertz and 2,400 gigahertz maps that were provided, most of the area that's impacted or benefited from this is actually in the city of Beaker or the town of Fischgel, or even in the Hudson River where no one lives. So we're really looking at only about 15% to 20% of a benefited area is in the town of Wappinger. Of that is maybe 100 homes. Of those 100 homes, how many have Verizon? Maybe 30 households have some type of Verizon coverage that they needed? So we're basically willing to risk millions of dollars in property values for all the people around it to benefit maybe 30 households. There's really no need for this. I work in marketing down in New York City. I specifically do... If you've ever talked on the phone and you got an ad later, that type of stuff, that you're like, "How does this happen?" And part of that is with 5G. And I talked to my Verizon reps at 5G, and they said this is the lazy way out, that 5G can be put onto utility poles that already exist, on buildings that already exist. It doesn't need huge towers. It's a future. We're literally just building this tower just to build a tower, it seems. I implore you all to look into 5G. It's in Orange County. In Orange County, there aren't any towers where there's 5G because they put it onto utility poles and they put it onto existing structures. There's no need to build a tower in 2020. The Verizon reps that I work with constantly on a day-to-day basis about this even said it to me. It's a lazy way out. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, counsel.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other public comments? Okay. You guys have any questions for the applicant?
I'm going to let him speak, and then I have some questions.
Yeah, there's some applications I'm allowed to make first. I don't know if you want to go talk to Seth first.
Well, after that other gentleman made a few things, I think that after listening to these folks, we need to speak privately.
It's more on the legal aspect, correct?
Partially, yes.
That was where I was going to go with some of my comments, actually.
You want a executive session for legal counseling?
Yes.
Can I?
You want to make that motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that. What's the basis?
Yeah, we got to talk about what the basis of the executive session is at this point.
Because we need to discuss a few things he had mentioned to clarify it, and we'd like to talk to you privately.
So my recommendation would be just to wrap up the public hearing at this point. There'll be an opportunity to discuss the legal aspects of both sides of this. You have a public hearing going now, so I would suggest, you know, we wrap up the public hearing, and then we can...
Well, we could close. If you want to close the public hearing first, if you feel it's more in order to do that. But in terms of other items, I think that we... Before we finish with the applicant for the evening, I think that we do need to discuss a couple of legal issues prior to closing out this evening's session here.
We're not going to adjourn. We're not closing this.
We're not going to close. We're just going to go... We'll do... Well...
You can speak, counsel.
Do you want to adjourn this to another meeting? To keep the public hearing open? Have you heard enough public comment?
Yeah, yeah. See, I think the board needs to make a determination of whether or not they want to adjourn the public hearing or they want to close the public hearing at this point, whether or not they've heard enough comments from the public or they think that there's additional comments that will be relevant from the public.
Well, I'd like to give them the opportunity to speak in the future.
You want to leave the public to have comment in the future?
Yes.
Okay, so you want to adjourn the public hearing?
Exactly.
You making that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded. What?
We need... Yeah, we need to have a date certain because we're running out of time on the shot clock. So we really need to have it be in both the extensions.
So when you're adjourned in the public hearing, you're adjourned to your next meeting, correct?
Right, correct. We can make it to the next...
That's fine.
Slide 20.
Okay.
So there's a motion on the floor of the second?
Yes, so...
During the public hearing... During the public hearing?
The next meeting is? So they're in front of us on the 20th?
No, July 28.
July 28.
So that works. We can finish secret before.
Right, so we're, we're meeting on the 20th. Correct. So we can adjourn the public hearing to the tw, to July the 20th. And that's where, so that, that was the motion and the second. And, law in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed, so that motion carries.
Before you go into executive session.
Hold on, let me just, let me just clarify something. So we're not going to go into executive session. We will go into attorney-client privilege session, which is, is exempt from, from the open means law. So we will do that after we are done.
So after we're done?
Yeah, I mean, so you close the public hearing, if, yeah, right, we adjourn the public hearing, and there was discussion about the board authorizing the, the drafting of the negative declaration.
Right.
And then.
Well, do we have, do we, do we address all the points for the negative declaration? That's going to be the next question.
So if the board's uncomfortable, that they want, they want to seek legal advice, we can go into an attorney-client privilege session?
Yes.
Can I get a crack at some of these issues that were raised that created the question? Because I expressly wanted to discuss them with you as well, before you go speak to counsel.
Why, okay, so why don't we, why don't we just, well, let us go talk to the attorney and go through our questions real quick.
There's only one person who has rights under the Telecommunications Act in this room, and that's Verizon, who's our co-applicant. And that's really important to remember. So all this discussion about the federal law, no one behind me has any access to federal court on any of these issues. The only party that has rights under the Telecommunications Act is Verizon as a carrier, and, and who is our co-applicant? And I think it's really important.
Right, so Verizon has the rights, but Tarpon doesn't?
Tarpon, they're our co-applicant, and that's fine. They'll give us the right. That's not a problem.
Let's, well, we, we've got a motion, a second. Actually, we voted on the, going into executive session.
Oh, it's not an executive session. Let's just clarify, it's not an executive session. We're going to a session.
Attorney-client.
Crime privis, yes, correct. Communication.
You voted just to adjourn to the 20th. We need a motion to go into the attorney.
Oh, sorry. That's right. We did that before, correct. Okay, so we need a motion to go into executive, to go, what was it, attorney-client?
To, to discussion with your, with the board's attorney.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Law in favor?
Aye.
And just board members?
Yes.